Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, school committee meeting. Would you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seems so quiet without some scouts here helping us.
Yeah.
All right, so call the meeting to order, discussion on school choice participation.
Sure, so each year, we are.
Do we have to make a motion to go into the session now?
She called the meeting to order.
Do you want me to call it to order again?
No, 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 I, we called the regular meeting, I thought we had to make a motion actually going to the public hearing.
You can do it that way, that's fine, sure.
I don't know the actual rules.
Yeah, so that's right, I'll move to enter the public hearing on school choice.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're in.
Awesome, so each year.
Sorry.
We are required to have a public hearing on school choice and either vote to participate or not participate and that, the result of that vote is filed with DESE and they keep a log of communities that are participating and not participating. So a little bit about school choice. School choice means that students from other school districts are welcome to attend Pembroke Public Schools. We've kind of teetered on this conversation a lot in the 15 years that I've been here. We've, we've never participated, but there's been years where there's been some more momentum and more conversation, more robust conversation around the concept. So what it means is that a student from any community could come here. What comes with them is $5,000, so the per pupil from the sending district is $5,000 for that student. Once you commit to a school choice student, you are committing to that student through graduation, regardless if the following year you decide not to participate in school choice, that student is grandfathered in through graduation. You do have the opportunity to pick certain grades that participate in school choice rather than saying K through 11, 12 never makes sense. K through 11, we participate in school choice, you could say just we're looking for students in kindergarten, third and fifth grade. You cannot limit the programming. We did talk one year pretty extensively about whether or not we could do school choice for our arts program, fine arts that we were putting out at the high school. You can't limit it like that, you can only limit by grade. The one thing I will say about school choice students is that it is a lottery. So if you have more students wishing to come here than you have seats, it's purely a lottery. There's no information that's given about the student, whether they're on a 504, on an IEP, on an L, everybody is equally in the lottery. So you don't necessarily know what you're gonna get. I do think this year with the three enrollment, elementary enrollment reductions that we're making, I wouldn't recommend that you open up school choice in Pembroke. I do think we are teetering on those class size ideals in a lot of places, the 24s and the 25s that we have been trying to stay, stay beneath though.
How much?
Could, oh, could I, could I ask, we get $5,000 for a student, we spend an average of $16,000 per student. So where is the, the benefit I'm guessing would be in getting a number of students so that our funding could go up from the state?
So if you're already running a first grade classroom with 19 kids in it, if you add two more kids, you're gonna get $10,000. You know, you're running the classroom regardless, your staff in the classroom regardless, you know, you could consider that $10,000 to be a bonus, but it's really only a bonus if it's a typically developing student that has no additional needs and you don't have any way of telling through the, the process whether that is the case or not.
Right. Yeah, I think that was the only question I had.
Okay, Allison.
Do they factor into our chapter 70?
So it's a cherry sheet, um.
So there's no.
Yeah, no, it doesn't come through us.
But it doesn't help enrollment?
No, no. It's, it's captured on the cherry sheet for sending and receiving.
Oh, it doesn't count towards, oh, I thought it did, okay. So the only benefit is getting the $5,000, okay.
Patrick?
Mike asked my question, that was good.
I guess, who does this around us and why?
I mean, the why I will never know, but, so this, I just went on their, the DESE website and printed out the spreadsheet of the 405, 351 school districts and who's participating and not participating and in what grades. There are a few communities around us that do participate, so Rockland does participate for limited grades, as does Whitman Hansen. Those are the only two.
For limited grades?
For limited grades, so it's not open K through 11. They, they pick grades depending on what their projected enrollment is for the following year.
Okay.
Those are the only two around us that are participating.
Are there any grades where you think this would be beneficial? I didn't realize you could limit a grade, limit.
Yeah, sometimes what districts do is just offer it for kindergarten, right? So when you're in, you're coming in at K, we're committing to you through grade 12. I wouldn't say that there's a particular grade where I would recommend that you do this right now. It's possible as the conversations, the larger conversations that we've had regarding grade spans and what that looks like, there's some efficiencies there that, you know, I could potentially see in the future. If you're gonna house all of your first grades in one place, opening up to first grade might be a great way to kind of build a little bit of a feeder if you have some, some flexibility there in your number.
So if the, you know, looking at it doing, if I do just high school, how, how would you judge, you can advise us like in future years on how like the numbers and class sizes and, you know, like would, is it, would it be, you know, because obviously like we do have two schools that are grade span type, you know, like the middle of high school, like is there a point with, you know, the enrollment reductions going down continually, you know, like at some point trying to capture?
Right, so you can set a max, you can say, you know, we're willing to take 10 ninth graders. I don't think we're, we're necessarily there yet, I think we need to, to kind of build out the pathways. I think we need to make a commitment about languages so that we can make really informed decisions about class size and project them moving out forward.
And then is there any transportation?
So the transportation as, is the responsibility of the family. It has no, no bearing on us whatsoever. That transportation becomes a concern as you start to talk about the likelihood that a student would want to come here. You know, I would say, if you, let's say you vote tonight to open up to school choice, I would assume that the first handful of families that you got that were, that would participate under the school choice provision would be children of employees and they can already participate through their collective bargaining agreement, right? Because the, the transportation only works if you're gonna be in this area anyways. And as you talk about secondary students, some of the athletic pieces, some of the extracurriculars become a concern. You know, what we do talk about a lot here is the students that we have in Pembroke, we want them to be engaged members of our community. And it, it's pretty limiting if you have quite a commute on the, on the either end of your school day to be able to stay after and participate in a whole host of things.
Historically, when we were talking about this, kind of going back to history, in fairness, we didn't have the enrollment, right, that we had, so for a while there just wasn't space. Even when space started to open up and when you look at this now, where you're only getting $5,000 per child, candidly, you're taking on a lot of risk for that $5,000. And it's kind of hard to be able to say, yes, let's take a gambler, take the risk. One student could eliminate six, like, you know, the revenue that you're getting with six students. So I don't, I don't know that monetarily from a budget perspective, there's a risk reward argument that we could actually make. Quite the contrary, it could cost us money.
Especially with not getting chapter 70.
That's right, that's exactly right.
Just out of curiosity, was this program, when it started, it was $5,000 and it's just never been adjusted for inflation or change? Because did it make sense?
So the program started in 1998 and the $5,000 is the max. So it's set at 50% of a district's, in district per pupil spending up to $5,000. So in the earlier years, it's possible that some districts were receiving less than $5,000 because half of their, 50% of in district people, per pupil at some point in the early 2000s might have been under $10,000, so. It has not gone up, the number has not gone up since 1998.
It doesn't sound like to me that this is the, the time to do it, but at some point in the future, it does sound like it could potentially be a benefit. But tend to agree that right now where we have just started the pathways program, we want to solidify things and, you know, makes sense to hold off.
And this might be completely out of line, but for those who are in like the VOTEC regional, does that allow those students to get in if they're not a resident of that town, but they're a student of that town?
The other town would have to allow for it, I believe, right? So if it's like if Waymouth did school choice, we could send kids to Waymouth and maybe they'd get in?
Right, so if Silver Lake were school choice, Silver Lake could take our students with no additional parameters. Silver Lake is not a school choice district, which is why we entered into that school of preference agreement with them however many years back. The vocational schools are listed here too, you'll see there's.
But like, but if a Pembroke student went to Whitman Hansen and then wanted, or not, maybe an elementary school.
So if a Pembroke student was enrolled in Whitman Hansen through school choice, they're not able to go to South Shore Tech because Whitman Hansen is a member, they're still considered a Pembroke student.
But they could go to Waymouth, Waymouth's a school choice?
Uh, no.
No, I just use Waymouth as an example because it's, they, I know they have a VOTEC program.
Waymouth isn't a, yeah, it's, it's a comprehensive high school with a vocational program, just like Plymouth North.
Oh, yeah, then no, right, okay. Are there any VOTEC programs on here that allows? Okay, I just thought of that.
And they wouldn't be, right, it's kind of intuitive to the business model.
Exactly. Doesn't hurt to ask. So, all right, so would anyone like to make a motion or?
So you have to vote to not participate in school choice, you have to either vote to or not to, so there has to be some kind of motion.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion not to participate in school choice?
For the 24, 25 school year.
For the 24, 25 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and the ayes have it.
So to be clear, we voted not to participate now?
Correct, we are not participating. Is there a motion to adjourn on the public hearing on school choice?
So.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. All right, and now I'd like to call to order at 6:14 the public budget hearing.
So we're gonna make a motion just like we did school choice, so they're the same?
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to enter the public budget hearing at 6:14.
Second.
All in favor?
Exciting.
It's tough to beat Dave to that.
He doesn't even have his iced tea with him or whatever.
No. Oh, he loves it.
Aw, amazing.
You're really not hard to get here, huh?
So. What you have in your packet shouldn't look new. It is the same slides that we have been presenting for some time now, but I'm gonna go through them, hopefully if this, oh, maybe, maybe not. Well, you know, let's start with this one. So the first slide is just a overview. Again, historical funding, this is just kind of where we, we stack up with the town budget, chapter 70 and our enrollment numbers for the past 1 million years or 14 or so. This number here that we have reflected reflects the same number that you all voted last week as your budget. It also matches the town manager budget of $38,580,000. Just to reiterate the conversation that we had last week, if there is a change to chapter 70, that change would be reflected as part of our budget at a meeting, at a vote at the fall town meeting in October, so.
And that's been agreed upon by that town?
I have that in writing for anybody that needs to see it. You saw it, it blinked.
Mary Beth, you're gonna be the clipper.
Again, this is the same per pupil slide that we've shared a couple of times now, where we are as a district versus the state average for our in district and out of district, or all students and in district students. I think this lends itself to the conversation we were just having about school choice. So in fiscal year 22, we spent a little over 16, $16,500 per student to say we'd be getting $5,000. I can think makes the argument that you were all just making, it doesn't necessarily fiscally make sense. You know, we are trending upwards, obviously at pretty much the same rate that the state is, but we are well below the state average for our per pupil spending both in district and for all students. Again, just sharing some of the slides that we've gone through before, just around, we tend to norm ourselves with neighboring communities. So just a quick look at where we are in relation to neighboring communities for the different expense categories that are outlined by DESE. A better comparison for us is on the next slide, which is our DART schools, so the schools that are similar to ours, socioeconomically, enrollment wise, population wise, just a better comparison of as much apples to apples as you can be. Again, every school kind of has a bit of a quirk to it. You can see on our DART, there's several regional school districts, Dayton, Rehoboth, Treetown, Lakeville, Hampton, Wilberham. If you ask me on the outside looking in, do I think we're like a regional school district? I would say no, because we used to be one, but these end up being our DART schools.
Part of what we talked about is normalizing the category.
Yes.
Did we do that yet?
So these are the, the 12 expense categories that the state outlines, but when we report our expenditures on this end of the year report, we will.
Shift it.
Shift the way we're reporting the content supervisors so that. So that the portion of their day that is teaching is captured in the teaching line. To the point that was made several times when we talked about this with advisory and the select board, if you add together instructional leader and teacher, we are not anywhere out of the realm of where everybody else is, so.
Actually, no, I know.
Correct. I mean, for fun, I thought, let's go through it one more time.
It's in front of you.
Someday I'm gonna take you all down to the office so you can see that my computer screen is about the size of this TV. So what looks huge to me in front of my face never, doesn't ever resonate that it may not be huge on paper. So our fiscal year 25 maintenance of effort budget that we presented in November, so again, super early for us, was $39,574,698. There are no required additions. In years past, there's been a few things that we've needed to add due to service delivery for special education or individual student needs. We don't have any of those this year. Our level one priorities that we'll go through in a, in an upcoming slide are all budget neutral in the sense that we are making a couple of shifts, but there's no cost associated with them. So there was no add-ons to the maintenance of effort that we presented in November. We take a series of adjustments and reductions and offsets to our operating budget. We've talked pretty extensively about each of these. We have a building utilization fund that will be taking $50,000 out of. That fund is where the income from the rental of the classrooms to North River Collaborative at Bryanfield goes into there. So we'll be using some of those funds to offset the budget. Every year we take an offset from our transportation account, that's where the funds associated with the bus pass fees that we collect go. And then the special education pre-bid that we have been fortunate enough to do for the past couple of years, this year going into fiscal year 25 will be about $525,000. There's potential for that to go up slightly if, if as we get closer to year end, there's some breakage in a salary line or some of the supply lines, we will obviously look to increase that tuition purchase as much as we can. And we are making four reductions that I'll go through later on, the budget for a total of 20, $280,000. So our reductions and offsets are just a little under a million dollars, leaving us looking for $38,619,698. We've talked about the increase in chapter 70, we are still carrying the $30 per student in our budget as well as the town manager is carrying in his budget. Again, if that goes up, the agreement is that those funds will come to us. In addition to the abysmal increase of $75,000, give or take, in chapter 70, the town contribution is increasing by $835,510. You'll know that there was a lot of work that was done with the joint budget subcommittee to get that number to where it was at, where it's at now. We didn't start there, it was definitely a lot of work from Patrick and Sue and from Tracy and John over the course of January, February, and March to get us to that number. That gives us the $38,580,000 that you've voted last week to move forward as your fiscal year 25 budget. I'll just remind you that we still have a deficit of $39,698. Again, well within the realm of what you'd carry forward in a $39 million budget, we will easily find that. As I said just a minute ago, the tuition could go up a couple of thousand dollars, all of that will chip away at, at that deficit.
Erin, the transportation of $700,000, how much does our actual transportation cost?
Oh, so regular transportation is just about $2 million. On top of that, we also have special education transportation, vocational transportation as well.
I just think it's important for folks to understand.
We are not collecting anywhere near what it costs to run the buses and the bus pass fee.
I also want to point out that the maintenance of effort budget that we looked at was 39.5 million and, which is basically for people watching is what we did last year, the cost of what we did, what we're currently doing in next year's dollars. Our actual budget we're looking at is 38.5. So in essence, we've had a $1 million budget cut, if you look at it in real dollars, and we had to eliminate four positions. So that's what we're, we're heading into this fall, I wanted just to note that.
I think it's good, I think it's good that to say.
Fair point.
Yeah, fair point. Just to talk a little bit about the level one admin priorities, we talked about this in a few of the individual department budgets. So going into next year, we would be reorganizing our content supervisor structure. Instead of having a separate math and a separate science content supervisor, we'd be having a 1.0 STEM supervisor that's similar to the combination that happened with ELA and social studies a few years back to have just a humanities content supervisor. What allows, what that allows us to do is to create an elementary content supervisor. You know, I think it's important to have some vertical alignment happening. It is important for our teachers at the elementary level to be able to work with somebody that has direct knowledge of the content that they're teaching. It's great to say, I taught that grade too, and, you know, some of that collegiality there. But we're also looking to build a bench. So whenever we have an opening administratively at the elementary level, we don't get many, if any, internal applicants. This gives us an opportunity to highlight, for, for a staff member, some of the opportunities associated with administration, get them excited about potentially having that be their next career step so that, you know, we can build some, build some internal capacity for filling those roles as we get down the line here. Some of the smaller items, the dibble subscription, that was, was pretty small, but very important after listening to both the elementary principles, to, to teaching and learning and a couple of the others. So we're able to cover that in our current curriculum materials budget. And then the town is funding our envisioned math purchase, so that was about $119,000 of math materials that the town will be putting forward at town meeting on the Capitol Warren. There's a whole host of budget neutral items that we were able to do, I'm not gonna run through them again for you, but they are listed there as well as the identified funding source. I do want to point out, there are some big ticket items here that are slated to be funded under S R 3. We were very conscious about the way we spent the S R funds available to our school district. We knew that they could be spent through September 30th of 2024 and we planned backwards from that date. So being able to make some of these larger tech purchases in times where communities are making huge sweeping reductions, I think speaks to the, the planning that this committee was willing to do three years ago when that windfall of money came in everywhere, so.
And that will be officially gone.
September 30th, 2024 must all be spent by. Do I think it'll be officially gone? You never know. So the year that the ARA funds, so the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act, the year that those funds disappeared in 2010, the next year was the biggest increase in chapter 70 that we got. So there's possible that there could be some, you know, evening of the scale in another funding stream after this year because it's a cliff, right? We've talked about this being a fiscal cliff and this is the end of it for us. So hopefully there's some sort of parachute, but we have been planning accordingly, even if there isn't. We are making three staffing, four staffing reductions, three of them are elementary positions, they are enrollment driven. We've shared the class size information in the past that is also found in the appendix of, of this presentation as well. It happens to be one position at each elementary school. But even with those reductions, all of the grades K through six in each of the three elementary schools stay at or beneath that strive to number that we've outlined here as a committee. So that's K through two is 23 and under and three through six is 25 and under. So we're staying below that, that cap in all of the buildings. The support position is a combination of a couple of things at the secondary level, but again, resources that are no longer needed because of change in enrollment at the secondary level as well.
Any of these retirement, I'm sorry, Patrick, any of these retirement driven at all or?
So we do have a couple, no, we do have a couple of retirements, we're not going to lose anybody in these, in this scenario. So there's nobody that, there, there could be people moving from a different grade or maybe potentially a different building, even though I don't think that's necessarily going to happen, but nobody needs to leave in order to make these reductions.
Oh, that's great.
Good.
So Erin, when you look around, whether it be neighboring districts, districts on the South Shore, throughout the Commonwealth, although we're eliminating these roles, as you point out, people won't be impacted, which I think is fantastic, by the way. How many districts can say that right now? Like, is this, I get the impression candidly that there are more layoffs than there aren't in districts, whether it be on the South Shore or throughout the Commonwealth, is that?
That's a fair statement, I mean, you can go onto any social media outlet or any news outlet and see that the override conversation is happening in a lot of our surrounding communities. In addition to those conversations, there are communities that are just making cuts in order to balance because there's no appetite for an override. We are really lucky here that we've been planning all along for this. And so I think, you know, one of the first steps that we took in 2021 was the creation of that special education stabilization account. So that year that we had extra funds because schools shut down early and there was, you know, we didn't need heat and electricity, we took those funds and created a stabilization fund that allows us to chip away at unforeseen special education costs, the planning for the technology through the S R funds, like all of that has really lined us up to be in, you know, Mary Beth's just scrolling through everything, oh, Jesus. Really lines us up to be in the best possible, best possible fiscal place that we can be in. You know, I don't want to say, you know, that, I mean, I feel badly for our surrounding communities as superintendents, we all are networking, we chat with each other, but we are in a far better place and have done a far better job than most of the communities around us.
And I, I just think it's important for that to kind of be out there and understood because it is about planning, right? Now, the reality is, you can only do that for so long and at which point, you know, you may need to make other choices and, and other options. But I just, I thought it was important for that to be out there in the narrative.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask a question from a couple of slides ago for the?
Sure.
The elementary content supervisor, will that position no longer be teaching?
No, so the content supervisors, that content supervisor wouldn't teach. Our humanities content supervisor doesn't teach and the STEM supervisor doesn't teach, but world languages and fine and performing arts does just because the staffing load associated with those admin positions isn't as, as great, so. Just next steps, again, town meeting is the 20, is the 14th, we will continue to work on closing that budget gap. Again, a whole host of things can break differently over the course of the next month or two as we start to close out fiscal year 24. Any additional savings that we have, we would again, put towards some additional special education tuition pre-purchase to, to, to really lower that deficit. Chapter 70, because it is an election year, I believe, will come in earlier than October. So we are looking for July or August timeframe to know for sure what the number is. And then again, at the fall town meeting in October, any adjustment to our budget that wouldn't be needed would be happening.
So can I just ask a question? I know we got the $39,000 gap, but, and I apologize for the last meeting, I just, I sat on the highway forever. So I missed some of the, the discussion. Did we actually make a motion on the fees that was rejected or was there no motion made on the fees?
Are you asking me?
I'm just asking in general.
I don't think there was a motion.
I don't think there was a motion.
Okay.
I called for a motion and then nobody wanted to make one.
Okay, all right, no, I. So, okay, thank you.
All right, that's it for the public budget hearing, you have any questions? Mike, questions?
Uh, nope.
David?
I'm just looking at a different slide that I have here.
Yeah, just, yeah, that's, yep.
So five, seven's not gonna happen and that's.
No, we're done, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So I'm good, thank you.
All right, Allison?
No, great job Erin, thank you, and Mary Beth, thank you.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
Thank you very much for all of your hard work and for keeping us on track and making Pembroke look good. I think we're like, I saw an article, we're in like 91, 90?
There's still some.
I don't know what that means, but.
Vagueness on how those rankings are really determined.
Well, they have South Shore, VOTEC on there twice, so.
Oh, okay.
But what number were they?
Two different numbers.
Yeah. Right, because that makes sense.
Yeah, exactly, so. But anyways, you've worked hard and appreciate all of your hard work on that. So do we have a motion to adjourn the public budget hearing?
Yes.
It's so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. I'm trying not to jump in on you guys, see?
David, just go for it, every now, every then, yeah, just go for it.
Now I'm in your head, I got you, you're not gonna be doing.
Okay, so now I'm gonna call, I'll call to order the regular school committee meeting at 6:31 PM and we've already done the pledge of allegiance, so is there any public comment? So is there any public comment? None, we'll move on to, hello to the visitors. That's on my agenda. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Nope.
And then under communications, Allison, do you want to speak to the?
Yes, so MASC is having next Monday, the day on the Hill that a couple of us have registered for, and I have reached out to the offices of Representative Lenatra and Senator Moran. And so I wanted to find out who else is going, and both offices would allow us or give us time to meet with staff. And so I kind of wanted to find out what the appetite on, if we still want to do that or not, so.
So I'm planning to go.
And I'm going.
So Allison and I are both going. Does anybody else want to have any ability to join us? Because I know it's the middle of the workday.
It's from, it's from nine to two, give or take.
Yeah.
I initially plan on going, but I can't. I had some other stuff come up.
Okay, yep, no problem, so.
So would you want to still meet with staff? What are your thoughts on that?
I would. Anytime you can meet with, with representatives of our representatives to advocate for just need and funding and sort of those types of things. I think it's really important to do it.
I think there might still be somebody in the office for, what was Josh Cutler seated? But I don't know exactly how that works, so I can look into that, too.
Yeah.
But, okay, I will organize that then.
Yeah, perfect.
Let, you know.
Okay. All right, with that, the warrants are being circulated at the moment. Consideration for approval, school committee meeting minutes of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Well, hold on, so I, I, sorry, I sent an amendment to change. There was no motion made under the vote for hockey, and that showed up as that there was a motion. So that was added.
Yep, Natalie made that.
That was already made, so.
All right, so a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of April twenty-third as amended.
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Superintendents report.
The moment you've all been waiting for. In your packet, you have for consideration for first read, the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. There is nothing new to talk about on the school calendar. It looks traditionally like what our school year has looked like in the past. So Monday, August twenty-sixth would be the first day back for teachers. They would be here Monday and Tuesday. Students would be joining us Wednesday, Thursday, and we would stick with that long weekend that we've been having for the past forever of Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. We did have some side conversations in regards to voting. So the state election is Tuesday, September third. I had a nice conversation with your newly appointed town clerk the other day, Andrea. And Andrea has assured me that she has already started the paperwork and motions to get the voting to move to the community center. So there was some confusion on whether would they be able to achieve that by September third or not. The only statutory requirement is that they give voters thirty days notice of the change of the polling location. Obviously, there's plenty of time to do that ahead of September third. In addition to that, the only roadblock that we're waiting for is she would not be petitioning the select board to change the polling locations until we have the official certificate of occupancy for the community center. So that's around, give or take, June fifteenth. They're expecting that to be filed, and then she would go ahead and move to the select board to have it moved. So this school calendar, there was some concern we were going to have to adjust a few things because we'd still be hosting elections here, but that seems not to be the case. So the two PD days for the teachers in August and then the last PD day, though there will be no voting here, would still be Tuesday, November fifth. That's the time that we've been using for conferences for the past couple of years, right in the beginning of November is we want to have those conferences. So I'm keeping with that date. But our last day with no snow days would be Friday, June thirteenth. If there happens to be weather days, and, and per statute, we are required to schedule a hundred and eighty-five days, so that day would be Monday, January, uh, June twenty-third.
June twenty-third, okay. Okay.
I don't know, go ahead.
I was going to ask Mike if you want to.
So as far as the, the voting thing goes, assuming that it's all at the community center, that's great. It means really all five precincts now would just all go to the community center. If that doesn't happen, what's plan B would be, we'd have to close school?
If that doesn't happen, I would come back to you with a calendar adjustment. We get a tremendous amount of feedback when school is open and three of our buildings are used as polling locations. It would be, never be something we would be doing on a presidential election regardless. On smaller elections, we've kind of taken a look at what the previous foot traffic has been. But even in those instances, there's a lot of concern from the community in having voters in the building with students. The parking lot's become a nightmare. So if that is the case, and we're not able to have the elections at the community center, we would shift and have the students come in on Friday, August thirtieth, and have the Tuesday be the other end of a long weekend.
Oh, right, got it. I, I, that makes total sense, okay.
Do we know what the projected, um, date that we'd be opening the community center?
June fifteenth is the official grand opening.
Okay, so by then we'll have the occupancy.
Correct, so before school is out here will be, this calendar will be posted and filed.
Okay, all right, perfect. Mike, did you have any questions?
Nope.
I want to throw out one kind of, I'm going to call it a unique suggestion, and it's always kind of driven me crazy. If we look at December vacation, school vacation, we're going to open the schools January second and third, middle of winter, heating, do the whole thing. What would it really cost us if we extended that? I mean, look at the vacation. I mean, I know it's keeping kids out of school for probably two weeks. That'd be the greatest thing in the world. But rather than open the buildings, heat them, the lights, the whole thing, keep them closed the second and third, and reopen whatever the, the sixth. And then just, we're having two days at the end of the year. Assuming we are done on the thirteenth in a perfect world, we built in till the twenty-third, we might be adding two more days. And I hate to say it, a lot of people won't show up on those Monday or Tuesday anyway.
So just, just to, for clarification, two days in January are far more valuable educationally than two days in June for us. So getting two days in January, again, there's no cost savings to heating. The buildings have to stay at a, at a minimum anyways. You know, we've had so many issues with our heating coils in the past that the buildings stay at sixty-four degrees even if there's nobody in them. So there's, there's not a huge savings there. Obviously, you don't save on transportation because you're just moving it to the other end of the, the calendar. But I do think from an educational standpoint, I'd rather have those two days in January than those two days in June. In June in particular, if you were going to do that, you'd have to push out the high school graduation to the first week. It would have to be Saturday, June seventh instead of Saturday, May thirty-first, because seniors cannot get out two weeks, more than two weeks ahead of the other students. So there's some, there's some pieces that that would push along. And I do think regardless of when we start and end school, AP exams are the same time. MCAS windows are the same time. I do think, you know, just from an education standpoint, that those two days are far more valuable to us than having them be June fourteenth and fifteenth, even though that's a Saturday. So June sixteenth and seventeenth.
All good?
Yeah, I mean, I just think it would be kind of nice. I mean, think of the vacation you could have if you were done on.
David clearly doesn't have a kindergartner. Anybody else? I'm teasing.
No, no, but if you go, if you get out of school on the twentieth, you would be back till the sixth. You could actually really go do something and go away and have some fun.
Lauren says no.
I, well, I'm just saying, I'm just thinking for a kid that would rest, having that actual time off to, like, help, like, invite them back. Try to come back to school.
Yeah.
If you have a tough time. So if you give them, like, a easy back in.
Two days, yep.
Two days, and then they get a weekend, and then they come back fully ready to go. As much as I love, yeah, ask me how much it means, like, I love it, but.
I thought, David, you were going to ask me about that Friday before vacation.
Yeah.
Because every year, the Friday before vacation, we've, for the past three years, have tried to make it a full day and have come back to a minute and a half day. But we're going full, full day. It's the twentieth of December, there's no reason for it to be a half day.
Yeah, it's too.
Well, Christmas is in the middle of the week. I think that helps, too.
Yeah, so you can't really argue it.
Yeah, that's true. Side of an E, W, so. So this is a first read.
So I, I have a question. So is, has there ever been discussion? I know in this area, school traditionally starts in late August. But because of, you know, testing windows, especially AP tests, a lot of places in the country start much earlier so that, you know, because there's a lot of kids in AP classes that have to do a lot of summer work. Has there ever been discussions to move the calendar just to? Because I know many other places that I've been to, you know, that school does not start in September the way it really does here in the Northeast. So, and that's a big disadvantage to AP kids who are, you know.
Yep, so that's, the start of school is outlined in our collective bargaining agreements with staff. That would be something we'd have to tackle if the school committee chose that as the, as an issue that they wanted to, to move forward in the next round of negotiations. There isn't really anybody in Massachusetts that's starting that early.
Yeah, well, that's what I was just, that's what I was wondering. Because I know this area just doesn't do that. So it just makes more work on, you know, and same with, you know, some of the MCAS windows. Like, the kids had MCAS three weeks ago, you know, so it's kind of just looking at, like, having to crunch in a lot of education and a lot of stuff in a shorter window than almost everywhere else in the country. Not that anybody wants to have to have school, you know, the first week in August either, but the way the tests are set up, that's.
Our schools are also old, right? So there's not air conditioning in most of the schools. Though I, you know, I think in years past, it's been just as hot in September as it's been in August. But that's some of the, the correlation with the calendar.
Yeah, that's why I was just wondering if there's, has ever been that kind of connecting to the AP exams and the other state testing.
Not here in Massachusetts, that hasn't been a big push.
Allison, I've always pushed for a later start. I was one of those kids.
Later.
I was one of those kids that grew up with the Labor Day Monday.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, that's how.
Again, I always say, being a summer kid in Pembroke, we'd drive home Tuesday and sat at school Wednesday.
Well, Virginia had what they called it the Kings Dominion Law. It was like the neck, it says that all the amusement parks wanted them to not owe the schools. Not, so they had to literally change a state law in order to get the schools to be able to start moving into August because it was state law. It was like basically for the amusement parks.
But if you're a Massachusetts resident, it's fun to go on vacation in other states where they start early because then you get to go on all the rides. Just saying.
So it's a first read. Happy to take additional feedback and questions before it's finalized.
Any other questions? All right, so is there a motion to consider this as a first read for the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the eyes are.
The second item in my report for approval is a copy of the PHS athletics survey. So what we've talked about for some time now is surveying our student athletes and families in regards to their experience with athletics at Pembroke High School. So it's a pretty basic survey, just asking, you know, what they participated in. You want to tell us anything? Kind of rate your experience for fall, winter, and spring. I think, you know, Brian will obviously be happy to share this data with you once we have it. But I think, you know, we're kind of in a place where we're interested in next steps for athletics and what are some goals that we can be setting. And this can help guide some of that work. So anytime we are going to survey parents, we do need your approval. Students, we could survey without your approval, but.
I'm sorry, to take the jump, I was, could we put something else? Just because it came up last week about would you be willing to pay X more for hockey, soccer, you know, whatever the sport is in general? Is that something we could ask on the survey or would that be out of line? Well, I mean, I think it'd be interesting.
They're all going to say no.
Well, no, but, no, but I think last week, we were defending the, the parents saying, hey, I don't want to put the burden on the hockey parents or on the soccer parents. But, you know, and I know I use the fees or whatever, but if you said, hey, our current user fee is this, you know, would you be willing to support a twenty-five dollar increase, a fifty? Whatever it happens to be, I'd be interested to see if parents would sit there.
Give them a multiple choice kind of thing?
Yeah, I think it might be a better time to do that as, when families are registering for it. We can have as part of the registration be an optional survey that they could fill out for the fall, winter, and spring. This is really about feedback and about the experience. I don't want people to, to be confused about that. But I do think we would get a better read on families that while they're in there registering for fall, here's what we're charging, here's what everyone else is charging. Would you be willing in subsequent years to pay an extra twenty-five dollars?
Respectfully, I agree but disagree. Because I think when I'm writing a check, and let's say I'm writing a two hundred dollar check for Liam to play something, and someone says, hey, would you write a check for two fifty instead? And I'd probably be like, you're kidding, I'm writing a check for two hundred. You want me to write two fifty? I'm not sure if that's the right time to ask me if I'd spend more money. Whereas if I'm sitting down filling this out, I'm kind of on my own time, my own dime, and I might sit there and say, hey, I get it, hockey, the cost is almost double for us to rent the ice. So I think if you're a hockey parent, you might be a little more prepared to say that where a baseball parent might say, what's the cost in baseball? You know, that's, I think, I'm just throwing it off for discussion. I'm not saying, I have no skin in the game with kids playing sports, but I'd be interested to get some feedback.
That's a fair point. I mean.
I, I think maybe then we could set up a fee survey in general and survey everyone about fees. There's no parameters on this survey, so like the student can go in and fill it out, then the parent can go in and fill it out. If we were looking for real factual data on the number of families that are willing to or not to do something, we'd put restrictions on one family per survey, one family per email address. This isn't set up like that.
I, I also think it's, it's tough, it's tough to survey this specific topic, I think. And the only reason being is if you're going to, it's kind of like when I get to the end of family, my Massachusetts taxes, and I'm already irritated. And they say, would you like to pay a higher rate? I'm like, are you out of your bloody mind? No, I don't want to pay a high, I don't want to pay what I'm paying you. I, I think it's a similar type of thing, right? And that's sort of what you were just saying, David. If I'm writing a check for two hundred dollars and they say, so do you want to write a check for two fifty? I'm like, no, I don't want to write a check for two hundred. I think, though, your point, though, is, is a good one in that we have to find a way to educate folks on the cost of these things and our options, right? Because to your point, just saying, hey, we're going to raise hockey a hundred dollars. No one understands that ice, but hockey families actually will understand the cost of ice time. But for the most part, ice time has gone up about eighty percent. There is a mini monopoly on rinks in, in our areas, so.
And there's a, that, that's a good reason that most people don't know.
No, no, that's my point, though, right? So I think if we're going to talk about getting that feedback at some of the sports nights or some of the, you know, some of the opening of school types of things, I think making peo, sure folks understand what we're faced with and what we're looking at, and then say, do you think this would be reasonable somehow in soliciting the feedback? I, I think that's, I, I, it's probably a better place for it. As we're opening, and I think it's a good idea.
I do, I do, too.
I envision a QR code coming to sports.
Sure.
A good time to ask people if they want to spend more money to understand how much they love the sports.
Do, do you want to come up to the microphone just so we can be on?
So I'm Paige Gracianno. What I was just saying is if you're going to be surveying people to ask them, how much do they love the sports, their coaches, et cetera? It's probably a great time to say, hey, this is how much it costs. And would you be willing to pay for this great service? You know, another five percent in essence of what it, it was raised. You know, the increase for us was three hundred and fifty dollars per student, but we're going to ask, would you be willing to pay fifty dollars as a share of that? They might be more open to that when they see the value that they get from it directly compared, so.
So I, I, I agree, but I do think first you got to do a little education, right? Because I think if you just lay it in on a survey that's sort of just saying, hey, what was your experience? Are you happy with what you have? Just sort of learn about the experience and where the programming is and are we given the right program and the right support structure to our student athletes, what have you? I, to your point, Paige, I think you're, you're right in the sense that if I love something, I'm willing to pay for it, but I still think there's an education component in what we have to do with folks before we ask the questions.
Thanks. Mike, did you have any questions about the survey in general?
The only question I really have is it asks for your name and.
It's not required, so.
Okay, that's what I was asking, all right.
David, do you have any questions?
No, I'm, thank you.
Allison?
Damn good.
Is there, I was just wondering, could we ask a few additional questions? Like, can I just throw out a couple of ideas for questions?
Sure.
So like, you know, we're trying to get an experience of like, we want to know what the child's experience was. Can we ask questions like, you know, does your child's coach build confidence in your child or something like that? Can we ask something around of that, of that effect? Or one other one that I thought, do you feel comfortable approaching administration with any concerns you have about your child's coach and your child's experience on the Pembroke team? You know, so just to kind of get it, because I feel like these questions are great and first of all, I just want to say I really appreciate the fact that you're even doing the survey, because I think it's really important to get feedback from families and know that the coaching staff is, you know.
Right. So I think it's fair to ask your second question on are you comfortable reaching out to the administration?
Yep.
With concerns? I'm just writing that way, sorry. The question about confidence, so this is our first survey, right? So I think, I think just getting overall experience is important. I would then, my recommendation is this is really a two-step roller, right? So we're getting just kind of overall feedback from this, this past year. I would recommend that you do this after each season for that season.
I agree.
Where you could ask more specific questions like that. I think it's difficult to go back to encounters that happened in August and say, you know, I just, it feels disconnected from the sport for some of them. So I think this was kind of our first step at getting overall trends. Are we seeing something in particular with a particular sport? Is there something amazing happening that we should be highlighting? You know, we, we always hear some great things about Coach Rooney and Coach Sapati. You know, are there other unsung heroes out there that we should know about? Are there some coaches out there that parents are, you know, less than excited about or students are less than excited about? Overall feedback we're interested in. I think if we're going to then following up with this after the end of the fall, survey fall athletes and families, then I would be asking probably 10 more intricate questions about their experience.
I also want to be careful too, because how the question gets asked is really important, right? Because I, my personal experience that my kids were all athletes, very involved in the athletic program, I actually think we have an incredible program that really raises character in team building and in work ethic and a whole bunch of things. Not every kid had the experience my kid had and not every kid going forward is going to have the same experience. But I don't want to start from a place of something's wrong, something's bad, something, I don't want it to start from a negative. I want us to start from a positive, right? And I think, I think to the point the superintendent just made, let's get some general information and feedback first. And then I do think, and one of my thoughts actually was, why didn't we do this six months ago? Why didn't we do this three months ago, right? I think going through and actually surveying families and students, I can't, I want to hear from the athletes, right? Because you're going to get, my kid was on the bench and they didn't get enough playing time and the coach doesn't really understand what my kid can do or not. You're going to get some of that, no doubt. It doesn't matter what you do, no matter what you put out. You're also going to hear a lot of, I think, character building, team building, you know, you're going to hear a lot of really positives, but I think how we ask those questions is critical.
Sure, so.
You're right, because say a parent is aggravated that their son or a daughter didn't play and they, they're going to answer the question a certain way, like it was a terrible experience or, and that's all you get. Or I don't feel confident talking to the coach about my issues. And then it's going to, it could reflect poorly on the, on the coach when it shouldn't.
Right, so I also just want to put in your thoughts that coaches are seasonal appointments. So there's been a lot of conversation in previous years about what do evaluations of coaches look like. So there's no such thing as an evaluation of a coach. There's an end of season meeting that happens with the coaching staff and the athletic director. But we, for many reasons, do not make multi-year commitments to folks. It is a seasonal appointment, it's listed as such when they apply. So when you get into an evaluation cycle with coaches, then you are treating them as if they are returning, even if you choose not to have them return. So, you know, asking evaluative-like, specific evaluative-like questions could end up being a bit of a concern as we get into some of it if there are, you know, bigger issues out there.
Okay, so could you ask, like, are you aware that there's an anonymous way to supply feedback to the Pembroke High School, or Pembroke Schools Administration called Titan Talk? And the link can be found here?
But why? I don't, I don't.
Because I found.
But this is, but here's the thing.
I'm just wondering why we would be doing that here.
We're starting from a negative again, right? It's about.
So hold, let me just explain, let me just explain. I, I don't feel, of course, we can ask it in a different way, but my concern is, is I've heard from a few people in the community recently that they didn't know, even after everything we've talked about this year, they still didn't know about the Titan Talk piece. And I just wonder if it makes sense, like, I, I want to be able, I feel like we're not doing a good enough job publicizing it. And this is another opportunity.
So we push it out on every newsletter, it's on the front of our site. I just, and I don't necessarily call BS on it, I'm just not sure how, why we were just identifying athletes to say, do you know about Titan Talk?
Well, I think we should do it with everything. I'm just, I'm just thinking, like, we're putting out a survey and it's an opportunity, it's another opportunity to put it in front of families that like, this is a place.
I'd rather put it on the school registration page.
I, seriously, this is getting ridiculous. I honestly God, ridiculous. Between the, there's an anonymous this, an anonymous person here, or I talked to one person who whatever, we have a district to run. And at the end of the day, running the district means that there are going to be things and out in the general communication era, and if you want to talk to somebody and tell them this is out there and this is there, I think it's super important to be there. But I cannot guarantee that every single person is going to be reached. And I'm not hijacking an athletic, in a general athletic experiential survey because somebody said they didn't know about something. We have pushed this and pushed it and talked about it and talked about it. We put it out on the website, we're pushing it here. This is becoming borderline absurd. And I'm frustrated beyond belief.
I disagree.
That it comes up. And I know you disagree. You're also starting from a negative. I'm tired of this.
Hold on, before you start getting, you know, yelling and like, we don't need to escalate it to yelling. All I'm saying is, is there might be a better way to word it, and I'm not saying I'm the greatest wordsmith because I'm certainly not. There might be a positive way to reword it. And I think it's important that the community always knows that they have an option.
I, I think the community does need to know that they have an option. I think the constant critical nature of either the district or the employees in the district or something else eking in at every generic thing we're doing is inappropriate. And I think what the superintendent is putting forth here is a very generic experiential, did you have a good experience, yes or no? Did you play a sport? If so, what sport did you play? What was your overall experience on a scale of one to 10? It's general data and information that can actually help to mold a better experience for student athletes going forward. Getting into a, do you know that you've got the ability to confidentially put through a complaint to, you know, through Titan Talk and Titan Talk is there? That is not what this is for. And, and I think at the end of the day, we either have confidence in the people that we employ and that run this district and that run our schools, or we don't, right? And hold on. And I think the reason that you're hearing my frustration is because things eke out constantly. And I see it and I hear it constantly. And I'm seeing it out in the public sector and it affects people and it affects morale and it affects our teams and it affects our staff and it affects our coaches. I'm simply saying, we have to reel a lot of this back in and we've got to look at, what is the purpose of this? And focus on what the purpose is. Do I agree, and I did months ago, that being able to throw something out and, and put an issue out confidentially was important 100%? I think we've done a heck of a good job at trying to push that out there. Do we put it on registration? Absolutely. Does it go in the handbook? Absolutely. Is it on the website? Absolutely. I'm not hijacking this to do it. That's, that's all I'm saying. I, I apologize for getting a little animated, but we have to move on, is all I'm saying. And that, that's just my opinion and I'll let it go.
I sort of take offense to the idea that you think that I'm like trying to cast a negative, you know, whatever on the administration, because that's not at all what I'm doing. What I'm doing is, is making a suggestion that I feel, I want the community to always feel that, you know, administration is listening, which, you know, they are. And Erin has done a great job. Anytime anybody's come to me with an issue and I call up Erin and I say this person has an issue and she, she meets with them, she's, her door is always open. There has never been a problem with Erin's communication with the community. She does a fantastic job and that's not at all what I'm saying. And I think that our staff does a fantastic job. I think Brian Phillips is an amazing AD. It has nothing to do with that. This has to do with making sure that the community feels comfortable, that they know there's always an avenue. Sometimes people don't want to come forward for whatever reason, for fear of, you know, I don't know, repercussions for their child in sports or whatever. Like, I just want to make sure that they feel comfortable and that they know there's an avenue, because I keep hearing, like, people come to me and complain and I keep hearing time and time again that they don't know it exists, so I want to make sure that they know. And not everybody watches the school committee meetings, so even though we've talked about it, ad nauseam. You know, like, people aren't watching this piece of it. They're only looking at like the emails that come through and sometimes not even that.
And I think.
You're saying people keep coming to you and complaining? Like, is there a lot of people coming to you and complaining about this?
Not, no, well, there are, just generally speaking, complaints from the community. Like, if somebody comes to me and says like, ah, you know, so-and-so did this. And frankly, like, sometimes people come to me with complaints and they're so unfounded, but they still want it, they don't know what the process is. They don't know, even though we've like put it into the policy, like, first step is you talk with your teacher, then you talk with the principal, then you, you know, like you go up the ladder. They still don't know, even though we've, we've passed it. And so they come to me and I want them to know where they go as often as possible and it's as simple as that. And so I've recently, I just recently heard it like two days ago, that this person didn't even know that Titan Talk was a thing. Like, two days ago. And I am just suggesting that, I'm not suggesting that the administration is doing a bad job. I think they're doing fantastic. I'm real, I just said in the meeting, I'm really proud that like we're even number 91 out of 405, you know, according to whoever. But I'm just saying that I want there to be, I just want to be transparent and open and like let people know. I don't want people to feel frustrated and get to the point of frustrating, being angry at like Erin or Brian, like thinking they have no options, you know? And this is just one step that we can get that across.
Okay, I take it at face value.
So I want to say something, so this can be anonymous, right? They don't have to fill out any attached to an email or their name?
It's anonymous, yeah.
So I definitely, you know, think that this is a good clean way. When would this be sent? Because the spring's still.
At the end of the spring season.
Okay. So when it comes to, you know, like the Titan Talk and all that, like, in this day and age, everybody has internet, everybody has a phone. If people don't want information, there's only so much we as a district, as superintendent, as community members can do to educate people. Asking a simple survey for the athletes and families is definitely not the time we've been pushing that message for that win. Some of the questions in here, right, is an easy way to put that information if they have an issue. Please share your other thoughts on your Pembroke High School athletic experience. That's a perfect opportunity for somebody to anonymously report a coaching staff, a kid, whatever. So I'm, I don't see the connection, you know, I mean, I, I think this is fine. I'd move to move this toward as, right now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, ayes have it. All right, next, Subcommittee Liaison Updates.
Sorry, managing us, practice pick-up crisis. My husband forgot we had kids. He thought he was single again. So in the Subcommittee update you have in your packet for a consideration of second read and approval of Policy Section J, so there was a number of revisions, recoding, and some new policies that we gave to you last week as a first read.
So I have a couple comments on J. So I know I brought up last week, last week, whatever that was, the JII student rights and responsibilities. There's also in here JI, which is student rights and responsibilities. So I think that we need to pull at least JI. And I think we're, there's too many potential redundancies that we're kind of discussing the same issue. We have agreements we're having. Rights, which is similar to the language that was pulled to go back to Subcommittee for the IMB. So, and I think, you know, just due to the extended delay in not having a Subcommittee meeting, some of these redundancies have, I think, I would like to see at least JI sent back to Policy Sub.
Is there a meeting for Policy Sub on the calendar yet? And when was the last time you guys met?
Policy Sub met the first couple of days of January.
So do you want to try to have a meeting? Do you have any time to have one next week?
Potentially, I could. Good luck.
So we can try to schedule something. You guys kick back I, J, IMB, and IJL-R2 to Policy Sub, so we can try to get something scheduled.
That'd be great.
So you guys haven't been in a meeting since.
It hasn't been a meeting in four months.
There has not.
Why is that?
We just, I mean, I was, we just haven't had anything to discuss until last week when you brought up that we should bring it back to Policy Sub. So as far as I know.
We tried, we tried to meet in March and Sue was, we were unable to have a date, I guess.
Yeah. So we can certainly do it now.
Yeah, no, thank, we can, you know, I don't, I don't use my phone during the meeting, so I'd rather.
Yeah.
So why don't you guys see what you can coordinate? I mean, there's two weeks left in this session. If it has to be approached to the next session, you know, so be it. There's only two weeks left in, you know, in this session anyway.
There's another part I'd kind of like to discuss. It can be more, I guess, like best practices for kind of tracking changes between the reads and who comes out of Policy Sub.
Yep, so Allison, talk to me a little bit about this kind of offline. Is that you guys are so used to seeing a red line copy of something and so the assumption is that the red line comes from changes made at Policy Sub, but is there a better way to track what the administration recommendations were in a different color? Or if there was a change from a first read to a second read, can we track that in a different color? Because we've just been tracking everything in red.
So, so I called today, this can be a Policy Sub discussion, but I spoke to our MASC district rep today to kind of ask him what the best policy, our best practice is in general, so I'm happy to not discuss that now if we want.
Yeah, we can do it at Policy Sub.
And we'll do it at Policy Sub.
Absolutely.
But I have some ideas on kind of just best practices that would help.
I think it's also good in the Subcommittee, because you're setting your own ground rules, right? So can I make a suggestion? If, it's been three plus months since you guys have met, is opposed to voting on something that was talked about and discussed that long ago, a lot has shifted.
This is even older than that.
Okay, so even more so. A lot has shifted, a lot has changed. Take out the redundancy, make sure the references are all based on sort of what we've done so far. What I would do is I would send both of these packets back, you know, for, for discussion, whether it be in, in this session or in the, or the person that's done in the next session. Given the amount of work that's been done, I don't think it'll take too long, but I think the committee should feel good about the fact that it's not stagnant, that we're at that from a current lens, sort of.
So I would recommend that you send back I, like you all discussed last time.
We did.
And J. K and L, there's.
Well, there's, there's the public complaints, there's KE.
Which is.
But I, I, I'm not, I'm not saying.
So just to clarify, all of this policy work happened in August, July and August. So everything that you're getting now and have been getting has happened in July and August. There's still six more sets of things coming to you, so do you want us to go backwards?
I, I don't, but I wanted to just make sure that.
I understand I as instruction and J as students, those are two things that a lot can change from August to now.
Yep.
Given what we've been talking about.
Yep.
But some of the, I mean, Section L has one policy in it.
L can go through.
Well, and to your point.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get it. L can go through.
A lot of it was really just like recoding and like it's nothing controversial. Obviously, if there's something in here that, you know, we need to look at, I think we should. Like, if you've already identified some, we should just look at the next.
I think there's at least four that are all kind of have very similar.
Yeah, well, that's.
Why don't you guys take J back to Policy Sub?
And K.
The whole thing.
And K.
Yes. And, and then just take KE back, and we can vote on everything else under K.
Well, L, L is safe to do every-
There's only one policy.
Well, no, L, I just hadn't gotten L yet.
K is, would be KE.
Yeah, so we'll just, just to make sure it fits, 'cause if we don't want, do this over here and then do something else over here, you, you want the, you want the policies and manuals to fit. That's all I'm saying.
There's nothing in KE that's gonna change, so I, I don't know that I would kick it back. I think it's fair to take it as a first read, this is exactly-
So, then the idea would be that, like, we would then be discussing the potential language changes that were discussed for IMB then? 'Cause I don't think that, like, that's where I'm seeing the redundancies of the building and all.
Yeah, ironically, KE is very similar to what we've been talking about, is what you're saying.
Sure. That's fine. Just kick all of K back then. Just don't take K as a first read at all, then you don't have to kick it back.
Right, no, that's my point.
So, we're sending J and K back?
Yep. You're not sending K anywhere, you're just not taking it as a first read.
All right, so, for L, is there a motion to take L as a first read?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. That's all I have in my record.
All right, future meeting dates and topics? Looks like we have the meeting right before the town meeting on the 14th, right?
Yes.
And that's it.
Um, you all scheduled May 21st as you reorg, so someone can sign those down.
Okay. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.